We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for July 14th at 6:30 PM. Let's please stand for our invocation this evening and then remain standing for our pledge after that. Thank you.
Let's pray. Our God and Father, we thank you for an opportunity tonight to be together to discuss the work and the ministry and the ongoing things of this community. We thank you, Lord, for the safety you provide. We thank you for those who provide that safety and we ask your blessings upon them. Father, as well, we ask wisdom and knowledge and guidance as the council considers so many things this evening. Again, we continue to ask your protection and we thank you for all you provide in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk Treasurer, can you take the roll call, please?
Councilman Span.
Here.
Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilman Uszak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Vice President White.
Here.
President Bell.
Here.
All present, very good. Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we are very honored to offer some condemnations, commendations, excuse me, of Maryville and Lake County police officers. I'd like to call on Councilman Minchuck and Councilman Leonard to approach the front.
On May 11th, 2020, at 6:03 AM, police officers were dispatched to the area of 61st Avenue and Interstate I-65 for a subject standing near the overpass of the expressway while morning rush hour traffic was below. Maryville Police Chief Joe Petrush was first to respond to the scene, followed by Maryville Officers Curtis Minchuck, Officer Reynolds, Officer Lito, and Lake County Sheriff's Officer McKenney. Officers observed the male subject, Peter Deck, straddling the raised concrete edge of the overpass. Officers were able to shut down the roadway and have medics in the area on standby. Officers tried talking with Mr. Deck, but he refused to cooperate and maintained his position with one leg over the side of the ledge. Officers decided to act at the exact same time Mr. Deck dove headfirst off the ledge. Officers were able to grab Mr. Deck just in time and held him as he dangled over the ledge. It took all the officers working together to pull him to safety and turn him over to the medics on scene. The quick arrival and heroic actions of Chief Petrush and Officers Minchuck, Reynolds, Lito, and McKenney are the reasons why Mr. Deck is alive today. The citizens of Maryville and Lake County are fortunate to have these officers to protect the service. Let's have a big round of applause for these officers. Officer Minchuck. I'd like to make a comment now, but I won't.
I'm really proud of these guys, what they did and what they accomplished. They did save lives. What they also wanted to do is what they did. But they really did. I'm saying anytime you got a big door open, pull somebody back up, that's amazing. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Chief Petrush to the front with Councilman Hardaway for a special presentation. It is Jim Donahue here. Did he make it? Not yet? Okay. We'll let Mr. Hardaway go first.
This is presented to Chief Joseph Petrus. You are one of Maryville's finest for your dedication, courageous, and venerable service to our town. With great honor and recognition, the town of Maryville and its residents appreciate your sacrifice and value. A leader is one who knows the way, knows the way, and shows. Congratulations on your retirement, 1979
So Chief Cortino presented a retirement chief's badge to Chief Petrush, and it's gold, but I remember going all the way back to when he wore a silver badge, chief. So congratulations and happy retirement to you. Thanks for your service. We also have presentations tonight from State Representative Lisa Beck, Mr. Mike Ellsworth, and Dr. Vern Smith from the state of Indiana. Please come forward and the floor is yours. Yeah, you can come back this way and we'll flip that microphone around. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
Assistant Chief Donahue didn't make it from the school board meeting, so we hold off on that one. Yeah, for Petrush.
I gotta pull this puppy down a little bit because it's very hard to visit with everybody while you've got the mask on, so I'll try not to project into the crowd very much. You got one there?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. It's indeed a great pleasure to be here with all of you tonight. I'm Mike Ellsworth, a state representative representing Lowell, Cedar Lake, Hebron, and other parts of South Lake and South Porter County. And with me is Lisa Beck, who has a precinct in Maryville, and Vernon Smith, your state representative. It's really great to be here to honor a retiring chief, Joe Petrush. When I submitted his name to the governor's office for an award, it turns out that Lisa and Vernon had done the same thing. And so, that speaks volumes. You might wonder what the nexus is between myself and Joe. Joey, as we call him, kind of family member. He is a first cousin to my wife, Dolores, standing over there. Their mothers were sisters, so I've known Joey since about time he got out of the Marine Corps, I think, a long time ago. And he teases me incessantly, calls me governor, like his dad did, and I call him Colonel, so we have a good time. Anyway, he has done more for this community and more for the area as a policeman than any man that I can think of. And it's really with a great deal of honor and pleasure that we have tonight a Circle of Corridin Award from Governor Eric Holcomb. To all who these presents may come greetings. Whereas the early leaders of our state gathered in Corridin in 1816 to adopt the first Indiana Constitution and create the state of Indiana. Whereas Corridin was the first capital and center of leadership in its early informative years of our state. Whereas, like the founders of our great state, many others have made remarkable contributions to the betterment of Indiana and to its people and therefore are deserving of consideration for membership in the Indiana General Assembly's Circle of Corridin. And whereas Representatives Michael Ellsworth, Lisa Beck, Vernon Smith have made known the illustrious benedictions of one Joseph Petrush, who has demonstrated in life and in service to the people of the state of Indiana, and I'll add, Maryville, the qualities exemplified by our state's greatest citizens. Henceforth, and having been deemed worthy of such recognition, the above-named individual is hereby declared to be a distinguished member of the Circle of Corridin. Welcome to the table. Dolores, come out and get a picture. No hide.
Feel free to come up and get a photograph if you'd like. Go ahead. No problem.
You know, it's an honor to be here today. I didn't even know about the other accommodations that were given out today for the Maryville Police. I do want to say that from 2003 to 2012, during part of your tenure, I was a Lake County prosecutor. So, you know, I really, it's such an honor to be here today to give the Corridin Award. It's always good to have somebody from Northwest Indiana get a Corridin Award. These are honored. They're awarded by the governor, so I really appreciate that we were able to get you one, so I appreciate that.
Allow me to begin by giving reverence to God and honor to all of these town officials and to all of you, the citizens of this region. It is indeed a pleasure for me to be included in this process. Certainly, I've known Chief Joe for years. I don't know how long I've known him. And certainly, he is deserving of the award that we are just a part of the process of getting it to come into fruition. He has served this not only the city and town of Maryville, but he has served this whole region because he's been so involved. And so, I just thank God that I was able to just be a small part of this process. Congratulations and may your years be blessed and many more.
I would ask Chief, if he has anything to say? It's been a pleasure serving the town of Maryville in the state of Indiana for the past 43 years. I appreciate the citizens of Maryville, let me serve you. And I always came out, try to make every day a big difference in the town. I hope I accomplish that. Thank you for your support.
You bet. Congratulations, chief. Okay, let's do some town business, huh? Steve King, do you have a recommendation for us, a letter on invoicing for the community center?
Yes, President Bell. The council has a special request. In 2023, the Circle stated that the new Maryville Community Center and the urban work destruction recommended payment for application number six, which measures less than $1,000 on this letter, a total amount of $599,303.
Motion moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit. Second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of the claims list as presented from Mr. King. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I will want to point out that tonight we're going to have some refreshments. We have a cake for Chief Petrush, et cetera. It'll be immediately following the redevelopment commission meeting. And we just have a little business to take care of and then we'll move on to that reception. Okay? So you're all invited to attend. So, consent agenda, we have the council payable voucher from July 14th in your packets. We have two council meeting minutes from June 9th and the 23rd. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uszak. Second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance. Mr. White.
No report, Mr. President, at this time.
Public Works, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. We had a meeting last week. We went over the problems with the branch pickup program. We are trying to blast that out throughout the town through social media, the internet, however we can advertise. The program is active. It is ongoing at this time. And just to let everybody know, it's just for branch pickup. You cannot cut down a whole tree or your whole bush or anything owing $6 or slightly six inches in diameter. $6, I'll do it for you. But anything six inches in diameter or more, they will not do. They're not going to spend any more than 20 minutes at one household. So, it's just for branches that fall down the storm. Any trimming, anything like that, that we weren't happy to come through the town. For $6, I'll do it. Just call me if they don't do it. Thank you very much for them for doing that. It will be ongoing. Other than that, we went over some staffing and some budgetary stuff, but everything is ongoing pretty good right there right now.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Minchuck. Council affairs, Mrs. Uszak.
No report.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mrs. Uszak.
Oh, no report.
And public safety, Mr. Minchuck again.
We've been very busy. As everybody can see, we did the little award ceremony in the beginning of the meeting. We need to continue things like that and not just for the police department or the fire department, but for anybody who does anything above and beyond for the town. I think we need to start recognizing those people, bringing them up here and letting them know that we care and we thank them. So, please, any department heads, anybody, anywhere, anything, sees anything that benefits the town like that where somebody goes above and beyond to be an asset for our town, please let us know and we will get on that. Moving along, we have our police commissioner openings. We have two openings at this time. I'm sorry, resumes are being taken as of today and they will go on through the rest of the month till the end of the month. Anybody interested in one of the positions for the police commissioner, report to the town manager's office with your resume and letter of intent. And then, once that is complete and the end of the month comes and that process is done, we'll go over to Mrs. Uszak's committee and we'll go from there. And lastly, we have another meeting at the end of the month on the 27th with the fire department to go over a few things there. So, we'll be reporting back on that on the 28th.
Okay. So the reason why we can accept two more police commissioners is that we expanded the board from three members, which has always been in the town of Maryville, to five members. And everybody felt that five minds discussing police matters today is important. So having five is better than three. So we've expanded the board as allowed by state statute. So that's the reason for having two openings immediately. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uszak.
Yes. In Crescent Lake, the new equipment should have been installed by now. Am I right, Jan Orlic, park director?
No, it currently is not. We do have the equipment.
Okay.
We had a conversation with Kevin Harple.
All right.
And they were going to button up some things with Public Works down in 1st of July and then begin the installation. So I would say in the next couple of weeks, we'll make an attempt at it, Jake. I mean, we'll redevelop that.
Okay, very good. And I believe the parks have been being mowed now, right? The lawns, the grass, all of that. The upkeep is there.
Public Works has hired a few more seasonal workers.
Yes. Okay, that's very good. Do you want to elaborate on the letter you have received that you contacted me about from the property that somebody wants the town to take over? Somebody from Lake County, I believe?
Yes, I sent information to Mrs. Uszak, Mr. Pettit, and Mr. White. And this was discussed last year. Lake County Parks has noticed a tract of land that actually was planted outside on 3rd West 63rd Avenue. We had to remove the equipment due to the fact that it was not accessible and sat behind a home. It was very dark. There was no electricity there, so the equipment was removed. That tract of land is also a part of a 90 or trap that borders up to 33 Golf Course. And it actually was needed to Ridge Investment Company. And Lake County Parks wants to take that over. They're going to do some butt lane restoration and subdivision in that area. So they're asking the town of Maryville to give them that 92 acres. However, my question would be, are you telling me that then wasn't needed to us? It was actually from Ridge Investments, so I don't know what we would turn over if that was not needed to us.
I don't know either. I'll say Tony, Park and Recreation Department, I think, you know, find out specifically why they are contacting us instead of the actual owners.
Well, they talked that tract of land off the tax sale, so I don't know what more they need. How?
Probably clearing time or something. Give me the information. I'll be.
Well, I think we could discuss that further at our next meeting, our park department meeting. Okay? All right. Thank you. That's it for now.
Mrs. Uszak, was there any update on the two lot donation that we received for the Bridgewood subdivision south of 93rd, 91st Avenue?
Yes, we had a meeting on that and that was all approved for Maryville. Yes. As a matter of fact, when was that meeting? I think a week ago, wasn't it?
Sure. The Bridgewood subdivision is on 91st Avenue and a little bit west of where the E and L Trail is at. So, the developer has two lots that there that are unbuildable. Due to the fact that they're unbuildable, he came to us to see if we were interested in the lots. However, they don't want a playground there. I believe they want maintenance of those lots, maybe a bench of all the trees.
Well, we actually talked about, I think, nine trees and a couple benches, et cetera. We've talked about this for a while. That's why I'm asking now where we are with.
Is that in your board?
It is.
Yes. Oh, okay. Now I'm recollecting it.
Okay.
Yes, we had discussions on that, but I don't think we really came to a complete final agreement at this time.
I had sent that information.
Yeah.
But to Leonard and Sean as well, so they have that information. As a committee, they have not discussed it as of.
Yeah, as a committee.
Can we make sure we get it on your agenda then?
Yeah, it's going to be on our agenda. That's why I just said at our next park.
Thank you. I'll let my constituents know. They've been asking.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Thank you. Environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did briefly want to talk about, and I know we're going to be dealing with COVID for quite some time, and I just wanted to go back. I've had some data from the Indiana Department of, through Pat Riordan. And of course, we had 400 people, I don't know if I said this last time, but we had 400 people that were pretty much tested. And that was done on June 11th to June 14th. And out of that testing amount, 47 people tested positive, which is kind of like 10%. And that's kind of on the low end if you look at how many people we actually tested. But if you extrapolate and go all the way across the board, I'm sure that number's a lot higher than that. I talked to Pat again about, and well, actually, Pat informed me that the state of Indiana wanted to do another test. I think it was in August?
Actually, it was last weekend.
Yeah, July, I thought it was. July 11th, 12th, 13th, what your email said, Pat.
Okay.
Take care, man.
Take care. Okay. I was going to say something happened. Yes. Actually, I would like to ask them to come back again sometime in August, this time giving the town a little bit more heads up, even with cancellations. Last time we put it together, it took us seven days. And that didn't include the weekends, actually. So we did something pretty good in that short period of time. So Pat and all those individuals that helped put that together, it was a success. And I'd like to see it happen again. We definitely need to know what's going on in our community. That was one of the reasons I asked Jean Ficker here today as well because I wanted to know if there were some grant dollars basically available for like mapping of hotspots. I think I got that information from me, Rick. I'd like to look and see if she can get a grant for that particular software because I think it'd just put us above the board here. We need to know what's happening with our community and we don't. So, I would talk to Pat about that and look and see if we can set up another testing date. Additionally, you know, I'm probably going to come with the 360, Rick. I did do some research on machine, I may have said this last, I mean, the Clorox 360. And I think that Margaret asked how it's, you know, how much it costs. Well, I woefully underestimate its cost. But at the same time, it's still something that I think, just like if we look at everybody here today, if we have our guy come in here and try to actually decon this place, he might do a decent job. But I think that the Clorox 360 will do an absolute job because it covers the entire surfaces. I briefly talked to Jan about it. She thought it was some, a good idea, something that maybe we'll do in the future, hopefully in the near future with the community center. Got a lot of people coming there, so we definitely need to make sure that we're, it's always good to do a wipe down. But when you're doing anti-COVID activities, you're specifically doing that activity to knock out the COVID. So I want to be a guest situation. I think that's all I have to add at this time, Mr. President. If there's any other questions, I'm open right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elections, public relations, and Census 2020, Mr. Pettit.
Nothing on elections and public relations. Census, I have not been contacted by Nick, unfortunately, in quite some time. And again, I think we said two weeks ago, Rick, it's probably COVID-driven with what they're up against. A lot of PR stuff, a lot of television commercials in the, here in the Chicago network, the Chicago area. So, hopefully, everyone is going online. Kind of back to your original comment of the solicitors, I don't know how they're going to handle, you know, the door-to-door follow-up and how we handle that because now we've just put a ban on solicitors. Are they, you know, do they constitute a solicitor or not, Joe, going to people's houses? You know, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I don't think they actually just walk door-to-door. They go on a specific schedule.
Right.
Yeah. So that wouldn't really apply to someone trying to sell.
Right.
Door-to-door.
So they should still be able to do what they need to do. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is ongoing and people can still fill out the census forms.
Absolutely.
Maryville was not doing too bad versus other cities and towns, but we're not doing as well as we could. So I really have to encourage everyone, help your neighbors, help your family members, et cetera, no matter where they live. It is so important to fill out the census. A lot of federal dollars come back to the town and we have to get a good count. Can't stress it enough. Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's it for now.
Please continue with economic development.
I got a building for sale. Anybody want to buy a 52,000 square foot building over to Mariplex? I do want to thank Rick and Pat and Julie Olthoff. All kidding aside, the old fieldhouse building is on the market until July 31st. We're accepting proposals in the town manager's office. It is 52,475 square feet with 300 parking spaces. All the utilities, it's connected to Nipco, Nipco Gas, Indiana American Water, Maryville Conservancy District. Again, Pat and Rick and Julie put together a great one-page slip sheet, I guess, if you will, on the sale of that building out there at Mariplex that the town currently owns. We don't want to own something that big, I don't think. So, thank you for that, guys. We do have an RDC meeting after this. Leonard and Jeff and I and Jan had a Maryville Community Center meeting. I'll go through that here in a minute. And the RDC will tackle a couple of items from that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to utility liaison, Mr. Span.
No report.
Thank you. Abandoned properties, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. I talked to Vicki Burnell about. Uh, yes, Mr. President, I talked to Vicky Burnell about, uh, specifically an area on 63rd and Vermont, I think you've been hearing for quite some time how big of a mess it is over there, in the terms of, this one home is really out of whack, half a ton of large tires out there, and then the last time I went through there, on my way to Arby's late at night, I looked and seen if, uh, if any movement had, and what I'm seeing is more and more is added, uh, being added to it. So, I talked to, uh, Vicky, and she told me that she talked to the judge, that, our, our town judge, and that he, uh, agreed to do an order, a cleanup order. Uh, it's been like that for quite some time, and now I think it's really time for us to move on it. Uh, still haven't been able to find the owner, for whatever reason, and we're looking for a way to make somebody, uh, responsible, but for in the meantime, uh, we need to have it cleaned up, and I think that's something we'll be able to do really, uh, in the near future.
Do, do you think that's something that Joe can help us with? Either find the owner or Matt Lake has abilities to do that sort of thing?
Send me the specific information, send me the guy's address, owner with, uh, owner with Matt, we'll, uh, we'll try to track down the owner. But at the end of the day, even if we can't find an owner, you know, we can still do cleanup, and we can file a lien against him, so we, we can take some, we can take some remedies on our end.
Because what I, uh, my, part of my conversation with Vicky was that it had seven citations already, and the guy that lives there is not the owner, so he's the one who looks like he's causing a real problem. So, uh, I'll, I'll be working with you real soon on that. That's to add to that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sound Identity and Beautification Committee, Mrs. Uszak.
Uh, yes, after my plan commission meeting last week, I met with Leonard, he's on the plan commission too. We had spoken about the beautification of Maryville, and he has volunteered to take care of the plants outside of the town hall.
Thank you.
So, he was, we had a little meeting right after the plan commission, so he has volunteered to do that, so I just wanted to report that. I think our plants will be taken care of now, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Marge, I'd just like to add a little bit more to that.
Yeah.
Uh, looking at the lot outside, I think we probably need to upgrade the lot, because it's, it's been painted and it's, it's been blacktop before, but it's, it's wearing down pretty thin. So, uh, in the near future, when the chairman, uh, wants to call a meeting about it to get that done, uh, just want to.
You're talking about the parking lines for parking spaces?
Parking lines and house, yes.
Yeah, we'd have to have a meeting and possibly take bids if it would go through with something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mrs.?
That's it for now.
Thank you. Community Recreation Center, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Pettit.
Jeff?
Go right ahead, John.
Leonard? Andrew is in the back there. Um, you know, once again, every time I give a report, it's, it, these guys at Core just amaze me, and if you haven't been out there, uh, Andrew and I, uh, we're kicking this around. Uh, what we may want to do, Mr. President, is have a mobile workshop, uh, maybe at the last week of July, we're all seven and any department heads, uh, we meet out there at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, and let Andrew and Jim Jones take us through. Uh, they have poured the floors in, in Jan's office area and the, um, the community room, uh, they're steel framing up, they're putting curtain on the outside, you can really see what the shape of Jeff's royal blue panels will be out there. Uh, they're grading the parking lot, I saw him working today, Andrew, with the dozer, um, just doing a phenomenal job. Uh, we just recently approved the pay claim that Steve, uh, authorized, uh, at our committee meeting. Uh, Jan has been able to get in contact with, um, the Pop Warner folks, uh, Steve Minchuck, uh, along with the Maryville Youth Soccer, and they are very, both, uh, groups are very interested in being able to use our multipurpose field in the back. And so, one of the things that our committee instructed Structure Point, uh, and Andrew to do, we had a presentation on a prescription athletic turf, which would require no maintenance. Uh, it is not cheap, uh, we'll be, can, Jeff will be completely honest, it's not cheap, but the maintenance over time, I think, will, uh, help us out greatly. Um, Joe has got a letter of intent, a draft letter of intent that he and Jan are working on for both Pop Warner and Maryville Soccer, where they would want to use the field. Um, we also, uh, later on at the RDC, we'll be instructing Structure Point through a change order to design a storage building slash concession stand. And Maryville Soccer and Pop Warner would be able to operate the concession stands on the days they're having games out there. Uh, I think Steven was in the audience, I don't know if he's still back, there he is. Um, they play every Sunday, right, Steven, all day?
Yes, uh, usually about 6:00 AM.
6:00 AM to about 6:00 PM. We do have the four light poles out there, which will light the field for the kids. Uh, this is exactly what we thought would happen, and, and I can't thank Jan and Jeff and, and Steven enough, uh, for bringing these people in. Um, not only do they see the outside, but then they're gonna trickle in, and they're gonna see the inside, and they're gonna see that community room, and they're gonna see the rock climbing wall, and the fitness center, and this is exactly what we want to have with, with our residents. So, uh, later on in the RDC, we'll be making a couple of change order approvals for kitchen equipment, as well as, uh, design fees for Structure Point to get started on that, of those other items. And then hopefully, at the end of the month, Andrew and Steve will have a proposal, uh, on the building and the field itself, and we'll do that. And again, keep in mind, there is money in that bond issue under owner contingency, so that's where this is coming from. This isn't any extra money, this is just spending it on capital, as Tom Pittman instructed we could do. Otherwise, we would have to return it to, Kelly would have to return it to debt service. So, it's one of those things where use it now, or eventually you're gonna lose it. So, we might as well give the residents, and we're, we've got interest from groups, we might as well use it now and get it done at a cheaper price than wait in three years, going back to Andrew and the guys and saying, hey, yeah, by the way, we want a football field back there.
Just to piggyback off you a little bit, Sean, I don't want to give a giant speech or anything here, but in my personal opinion, I'm sure a lot of the council people here share the same opinion, this is what we're doing this for, is for the youth in our town. I'm not worried, I'm not, we're not here to make money, we're not, we're here to invest in our youth, and that's what I want to see. So, if there's any other youth sports, sports programs out there, we'd be more than happy to help you get going back on your feet. We're gonna have a basketball gymnasium, we're gonna have volleyball, we're gonna have this field on the outside, anything we can do to help our youth, to give them something to do in our town, um, to give people, you know, even their seniors, we're gonna, we're gonna have the actual, uh, community center going. We need to give these kids something to do in our town, other than nothing. So, anybody has anything, please reach out to the town, we'll be more than happy to do what we can.
Then, Mr. President, I'll find out, we'll stay, Steven, Pat and I will stay in touch with Andrew, we'll find out when all the floors are poured and cured, and we can schedule a walkthrough for the council members.
That's great. I got one thing, who's supposed to cut the grass over there, in the front of the building?
In the front of the building?
In the front, in the front, by the sidewalk.
Right along Broadway?
Right along Broadway. That's, that is, I don't even want to get started, how horrible it looks.
Okay.
Enough said. We had, we had a little workout once, we got, we got a lot of the driveway, yeah, we had a lot of work. When, when did they cut? Okay, it needs to be cut again. Thank you.
Well, they've been short of help, so, Jan Orland, she sent people over from the.
Is it the town's responsibility, or is it the contractor's responsibility? That's my question.
Okay.
Well, it's construction, I mean, I guess, part of me says it's a construction site, and landscaping's gonna be taking place. I noticed that, uh, you guys planted trees in all the islands, right, Andrew?
Yep. And, you know, we, we, we've been done it, and, 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 we've been, we've been doing our dishes, we've got the grass, but we think it's now, uh, pretty true.
All right, we'll take care of it with Public Works.
Well, they've been short of help.
Yeah.
I, I think.
They're not now.
I, I agree with, I agree with Richard, I think it's the contractor's responsibility, actually, to make sure that's done. I think we have enough to do, but it doesn't matter, in any case, to me, I just think that it's not a hard job to have contractors, kind of, just like they planted trees and did landscaping there. If you need me to come out and cut the grass, I'll cut it.
So, you're gonna do the flowers here and the grass? Can we get you a?
Am I saying too much?
I think he's going for one of those awards that Mr. Minchuck mentioned.
I already got the, uh, branch pickup program for $6.
Okay, moving on. Um, department directors' reports, any department heads would like to report to the council, it includes you too, chief and assistant chief.
I would like to, um, tell you, Chief, thank you so much for the service, here themselves, but not only yourself, I want to thank your family for being here with us, we appreciate everything, I owe myself, but they're tired of it.
Very good, thank you, chief. I know Joe loves just sitting here taking all these accolades, I can just tell. So, uh, moving on to, uh, ordinances, this evening, we have no first or second reading ordinances, we have no resolutions on the agenda. The first BZA action, I'm gonna actually remove it from the agenda, there was a death in the family for the petitioner, we wish them well in our condolences, we will revisit them at the next council meeting, so moving on to.
Do we want to table that officially, Mr. Bella, or?
Uh, well.
Joe, do we, should we table that?
Table it.
Motion to table.
Second.
The chair's gonna recognize Mr. Minchuck for a motion to table, and a second by Mrs. Uszak. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we will table that to the next meeting. The next item, though, is a BZA action for petitioner John Melendez. The owner is CPTREO LLC. The request is for a special exception to allow an auto body repair shop at 8365 to 8385 Maryville Road. Mrs. Shine, would you like to start us through this?
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section 21 at 136, NCT Highway Commercial Land District, to allow a auto repair shop to be located at 8365 8385 Maryville Road. Petitioner would like to build an auto repair center that will be used, that will be architectural design engineer panels. The panels are waterproof, waterproof, and flameproof. The panels will be well insulated and will keep all sound inside the designated repair area. The repair center will be equipped with robotic instrumentation. The front of a 11,900 square foot building will be stone, gray, and glass, and all sides will have textured appearance. Petitioner has submitted preliminary drawings. Parking will be on the northwest corner, keeping the front open for customers to enter and access to the 84th Drive. Landscape will be on the front, east, and west side of property, and will be the town landscape department. That will operate our 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 9:00 to noon, by appointment only. Colds on Sunday, there will be approximately 10 to 40. Petitioner has submitted preliminary drawings, and upon approval, petitioner will comply with all sound, colds and ordinance, with petitioner only for this location only and conditions only. On May 27, 21, petitioner legal counsel requested to defer. Petitioner has submitted architectural drawings of the building that will be created alone with other construction. All cars will be parked in the designated area out of, from the adjacent property. Petitioner is aware of the off-street parking ordinance. Action taken by the ordinance officer, the vote was four, two, one, and a, the petition was storm water plant, all vehicles stored behind opaque fencing, all vehicles parked in the parking lot, and buildings must be built by storm. So, this petitioner only for this location only and conditions only.
Thank you, Sheila. Is the petitioner here tonight? Please come forward in case there's any questions, gentlemen. Introduce yourselves, please.
I am Michael Gisidus, I am the attorney for Mr. Melendez, who is the petitioner, and Mr. John Melendez is here with me this evening as well.
How you doing, guys? John Melendez with JDM Collision?
Thank you. So, all I've been hearing about is that, how this is gonna be a state-of-the-art facility, and, uh, with ideas of offering training to, uh, Maryville students, et cetera. Do you want to expand a little bit on that? I was, that intrigued me.
Yes, well, what we're having down today is, there's a lack of individuals get into our industry. A lot of the dealerships themselves, we even speak for that on behalf of the mechanics, but on the auto body side, it's the same thing. And there's not any comprehensive programs in any town close by here. There's not an area career center. The only closest one you have in proximity is in the Hammond School system, which, by the way, I volunteer a lot of time there already. It would be nice to have some type of plan here, where in the future, we could possibly have a job shadowing type program. On liability stands, we're not just gonna take a young individual and toss them into the production side, but the point is to at least give them the opportunity to see what this industry is about. With the new type of style of equipment that's out, the ergonomics behind the special program of welders, there's so much new stuff that's available, that it makes the job much easier that they're not aware of. It might be appealing to an individual that's not cut out for college, I'm willing to offer that to the community.
Very good.
Do you have another business too?
Yes, I do.
At this time, and where is it located?
I had three businesses, ma'am, I've shuttered two of them in the state of Illinois. I had one in Olympia Fields, I had one in Lansing, and I have my current location that is in Thornton, Illinois. We were very successful.
What made you want to come to Maryville?
The taxes in Illinois are just absorbent, and they've hurt us over the years, guys, honest to God. And literally, back in the day when we had the first recession back in 2008, we had a large facility, we literally shuttered that facility, we downsized, and by doing so was why I'm still in business today. But with that in mind, the tax base has never changed. So, it left me no choice but to downsize, and my goal was eventually to come to Northwest Indiana. I am from Northwest Indiana, I'm originally from UChicago.
Okay.
I've worked my way up into an ownership interest program with a dealership group that I purchased in 2005, that I worked for in 97. And I've learned a lot in the industry, and I've been giving back as much as I can. I'm also for the Northwest Indiana, I am the iCar chairman, that helps train individuals in the industry at other businesses around the area, in which I'm actually looked at, to help put programs together for the existing businesses that you have in Maryville. I'm the chairman. So, there's a lot that I give back, in the sense to make sure people's cars are fixed properly, and that's one of my biggest goals. This facility is gonna be the most advanced in the state. Our robotics are being imported from Europe, the technology is just by far so amazing, that it literally makes it and puts us to the level that nobody else has. This process, I've mentioned to the board, is in Ohio. Canada has picked up on this process. Their EPA guidelines are more stringent than ours here in the United States. That's gonna put us on a whole different level, and that's what I'm trying to bring here.
Well, it sounds like you have a real good program and a good business.
Only but surely.
And I think you will bring a more, more tax money into the town of Maryville.
That's what I hope.
And if anybody else doesn't have any more to say, I will make motion to approve Mr. Melendez's business.
I'll second Mrs. Uszak for a couple of questions to staff and to Mr. Melendez, if you don't mind.
My Mrs. Uszak, second by Mr. Pettit. John?
John, you're gonna exit, this is, the site plan that's in here, Sheila, they're gonna have two exits off of 84th Drive, correct?
No.
No.
One only.
One only?
Yes, it's gonna be on the farthest, uh, east side of 84th Drive. Entrance and exit.
That was a concern, Mr. Pettit, so.
Oh, so that's out?
That is correct.
And what entrance up against the dialysis lot?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, I noticed in here, Sheila, you know, I always ask this, uh, and I know there were, there was one remonstrator, um, and I guess the letter is in here from DRK Enterprises LLC. I, for the life of me, Rich, cannot remember when we turned down an auto body shop in 2013 out on that location, do you? I don't remember, it says in this letter that we denied.
It wasn't an auto body shop, it was a muffler.
A muffler shop?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause you and I were on the council, I don't remember that back then, but neither here nor there.
And Councilman Pettit, just, just to be clear for the record, it was presented in the staff report that this is an auto repair shop, it's actually only an auto body repair shop.
Body repair.
There will be no engines, no transmissions, the noise affiliated with that will not be in this particular business.
Um, and one last item as, as RDC President Pat, I'd be curious to see if this property, this lot is in the Merrillville, I don't know how far down the Merrillville Road tip boundaries go.
It's in it.
But if it's two to three million dollars, thank you very much, because that's going into our Tiff district toward our community center.
It's, it's inside.
Is it? It's in the boundaries, Rick?
Well, that's what I said for the economy of Merrillville. I appreciate you guys coming.
And again, hopefully John, strongly encourage union contractors, that would be great.
Right.
Actually, right now, the one that actually is going to erect this, is the building is going to be of steel. It is going to be of recycled steel through Nucor, which is a company located here in Indiana. The latest in technology with the type of panels that it's going to be, their architectural design, the structure is going to be non-combustible from recycled steel, and the erector is here and is a union contractor from Merrillville that we've already reached out to.
Sure.
Right off that, we're going to be from eight to 10 to start off with, and we hope to grow from that point.
Okay. Just for the record, Sheila Schein did check with Ohio and followed up there.
The company in Mentor, Ohio, that uses this for body system, I didn't call the company, what I did was, I called the planning and building department and called enforcement that this particular facility had complaints of noise or anything, and the lady from the building planning director emailed me back and said that they had not, and she did for that, we were the latter.
Very good. So still under discussion, I just want to thank you for delaying the month that you did, for providing renderings of what the building is going to look like, because from the very start, there was a lot of confusion about what this project was, what it was going to look like, et cetera. Having counsel was also smart, I've talked to him a couple times, that's been beneficial. So thank you for working with the town to bring a nice project here.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and for those that actually have opposed it in some sense, I'm trying to regain their trust, because those will be future customers of mine, I'm hoping.
Let's make sure we do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, counsel? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call please.
Pat?
Yes.
It's Hardaway?
Yep.
Yes.
That, yes.
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 Yes. Seven zero, congratulations, welcome to Merrillville.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, is there any old business before us, council members? None. Moving on to new business, we talked about a motion to allow an executive order to temporarily suspend door-to-door sales due to COVID-19 and the issues that may cause with residents. I would entertain a motion to do that.
I'd like to make a motion on that, Mr. President.
Motion by Vice President White, second by Councilman Hardaway for approval. Any questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, I'll get that issued. Is there any public comment this evening?
Mr. President, I'd like to still say something on the new business.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically make a statement as a council person here, when I read the newspaper, I think I just briefly told you about it, you weren't aware of it. Down in Indianapolis, I think it was yesterday, our state Senator Eddie Melton had a situation where even though he had a swipe card, when he came into the building, I guess the officer didn't recognize who he was and kind of unholstered his weapon. I, I know with the times right now that we're going through, it could have been really a lot worse. You have a state representative that can't even basically go into the building where he works at, then there, there's a lot of things going on here. So I just want to make sure that our counsel had a statement in a sense of support and making sure that he's feeling, because I'm sure there's some traumatic situations going on with that, I've been in that situation before, not specifically with police, but in the terms of individuals pulling weapons on you, it's something that you don't forget. So I just like, even though I know we got our state rep Lisa Beck here, she may have heard about that as well, and we just want to make sure that we are concerned about the safety, and I'd like to say, if there's something we can make a statement about, I would appreciate it.
Where did that happen at, Leonard?
Happened at the Indiana State House.
Oh, in Indianapolis?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just noticed it yesterday, in the newspaper yesterday.
Yeah, it happened Saturday.
Okay, maybe Richard knows a lot more about it, but in any case, you know, we have to protect all of us. All of us, I mean, there's some serious things out here, I've seen some things in the past month that I have never seen, some things right here. So I just think we just got to keep praying this thing out and maybe it'll turn around one day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none? Oh, yes ma'am, please approach to front though, if you don't mind, and state your name and address.
Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place, Merrillville. I spoke to you last month at the town hall meeting, and you may remember that I was told that that stormwater ditch was the residents to take care of. I've spoken to a number of residents, nobody's aware that we're supposed to be taking care of that stormwater ditch, first of all. And then I went into the definitions and the code of the town of Merrillville in order to determine if this could actually be the case, and I would say it is not. And the reason why I'm saying is, is everywhere it designates what the stormwater system is, it designates all these sections as being owned by the town. And we are actually, I went to the stormwater utility user fee and the user fee structure, and every resident of the town of Merrillville, whether it's a business, an empty lot, a commercial, a single-family duplex townhome, whatever you're talking about, everybody is paying a user fee into the town of Merrillville, and it happens at tax time where we all pay as part of our tax bill, we're paying into that. Now for a single-family home, it's $9 a month, which I gladly pay, and when you look at the description of what the town is doing with it, it keeps mentioning the word maintenance for the stormwater management. So as far as I'm concerned, I really, I couldn't climb into this ditch, nobody else can. I found another, you may remember, I showed you my blisters on the own. I found another resident that had the same blisters, had no idea where he got them from. I also took some pictures of every, it doesn't matter if it's the town's ditch or our ditch or whatever, right next to the water facility down on 73rd Place. It, it's full of weeds and everything, and then I took some pictures of what I would have to maneuver through in order to maintain this ditch. And this is where it gets tricky, because the ditch where I am is not like the nice developments that you see in other places, but it is all loose rock. Every time I go in there, I'm worried that I'm going to break my ankle. And I said last time, I'm 60 years old, I look maybe a tad younger and a little bit more spry, but I'm worried every time I go into that ditch. And then besides the poison hemlock, I found a wonderful female snapping turtle, alligator snapping turtle, and she sits in a bed of poison ivy. So I'm neither willing to deal with one poisonous plant, not the other poisonous plant, and I would really hope that the town can come up with some ways of helping us, because all the residents are under the impression that the town comes through twice a year and cleans up that ditch.
Now, correct me, correct my memory, last meeting that you were here, did you meet with, with Matt Lake after the meeting?
No, no, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't. We need to let you, the $9 you're paying goes to his department, Stormwater Management?
We stopped him on the phone.
Yes, and he is our, he is our stormwater guru, so.
And one thing to keep in mind, Mr. President, ma'am, one thing to keep in mind is that when your subdivision was platted and built out in the West, and it may have been before we were incorporated, Margie, I don't know, I wasn't here, but the way it was platted, you folks may own to the center of that ditch line. Now, if you all want to get together with Matt and with Joe and dedicate easements out of your lots, we can't go on private property. Public Works can't go on private property, Matt's guys can't go on private property, we don't do that. But if you dedicate an easement to us and coordinate with all your neighbors, then we can do the, the maintenance that you're requesting.
So when I bought the house in 2017, I had a surveyor out, and he shows me on the survey that that is an easement for the town of Merrillville.
Okay.
So this subdivision was built in 73, from what I can see, or thereabouts, but we have easements where that stormwater ditch is.
Okay.
So his plaque says I own it, but my survey that I had done says this is an easement for the city.
Also part of the town code says anything outside the right of way.
I have a question for you, Matt, does that run into Kaiser Ditch?
This ditch? Right.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, that runs into Kaiser Ditch, there for a while, the county was cleaning that, if you remember.
Yeah, the Kaiser Ditch is a Lake County regulated drain, there's a 75-foot drainage at the top of that. And they come through and do maintenance probably once every 10 years.
Well, when George Van Tiel was there, I called him every summer, he had a crew out there cleaning that ditch. So if you're talking about the ditch that runs into Kaiser Ditch, that was taken care of a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so when I first moved there, it was twice a year, then it changed to once a year, and Matt Lake told me it was going to be every other year. I cannot maintain this ditch.
That area there, the way we were doing it was just take, take care of the woody debris, make sure that trees don't grow up in there, take that down, but we're out there to, to mature and.
Well, there were people mowing their grass and throwing all the grass, the leftovers into the ditch, so they would have to come out and clean. And the area where you're talking about, they were cleaning that too, at that time.
Yeah.
Now, I haven't been out there.
But none of the residents that I talked to has any clue that we're supposed to be going into that ditch, potentially breaking our ankles and doing something. If it's my ditch, then I would like to get permission to pour concrete in it, put soil on it, make it into a lawn and mow my part of the ditch.
We don't recommend that.
We don't recommend that.
Let's hold off for now on the.
Hey, you can do that, and when you flood your neighbors out, we'll give them your phone number. Margie's.
Well, you know, my neighbor hasn't done anything, so they still have half of the ditch, a little bit more than half of the ditch.
We, we can sympathize, but Mr. Lake, would you mind getting together with her and seeing what we can do if we need to call the county and remind them that they need to get that cut or whatever we have to do?
Well, I don't think where she's at, it's a county regulated drain, where you're at, you're on, you're between Tady and.
Chase. And Chase.
So that is, that part that's not, that's a lateral to Kaiser Ditch, that's not, that's unregulated lateral. So the Public Works used to have summer kids going through there, because they would take the weepers and just kind of go through and they clear out, again, the trees, but also the, you know.
Yeah, the trees are like way taller than these now.
They just go through there, they just go through there and then clear out the line clearance, don't take as much as they can while they're through there. But to hire a contractor costs about $7,500 a year.
So if they clean that out, I am willing to pull the poisons in there, to kill everything that's in that freaking ditch, I swear. I will put my money into that, but I cannot clean out that ditch.
If it's a couple of days to plant, there is some poison, I'd be like you said, some poison hemlock as well.
Lots of poison hemlock, it's everywhere, and I have pictures too.
But it is also private property, because you know, your backyard has easements, there's a lot of backyards, easements, we all know, between our backyards. That's a little bit different, because it is a ditch, it's a little bit more of a challenge to do, but we were rolling through there, we once, we started once a year, it became to expensive points every year, and we're just trying to keep the woody broken down. We don't want big trees growing up in there, because when branches start falling off and things start happening with the trees and start blocking the drain, it's an issue. Tell her, her vegetation is not, is not the issue there, it's the woody debris that we have concerned about. We hire contractors, they go through, they clear everything down, but after about four months, it's, it's growing back up, you know, so we can't go through there.
The problem is that throughout, wherever you go, you can find the poison hemlock.
Yeah.
And all these, and right now it's going to seed actually, we're now in seed stage, everything looks like mustard. And all these seeds flush down the stormwater and everybody gets poison hemlock. I actually have this stuff now about maybe 15 feet into my property, I find little poison hemlocks trying to grow. So this stuff is taking over everything.
Understood. Mr. Lake, can you come up with a plan and present it back to the council and let us know what we could do to assist you with it?
Yeah, we could, we could look at, we tried to spray it before, you know, in that area too, and you have to be careful, you're in a waterway, you're in the water in the West actually, so there are restrictions on some of that stuff, wouldn't count a lot of patients.
Matt, if you talk to the surveyor, Mr. Emerson, he might be able to help you out there, he's been out there before. And he's offered, so give him a call and see what he says, okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Could you, if those are copies, could you leave them with, with Matt? See if you can get her copies, Matt, so you have the information. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Reminder to stay for refreshments right after the next meeting, which will be very quick, by the redevelopment commission, and the town council meeting next will be on July 28th at 6:30. I'll continue motion in return.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Like to call the meeting in the.